Okay, it is six thirty-six PM and we're back in session and we are now launching into six point three, a discussion on the Futures Lab and Scott, I'm turning it over to you.
Thanks President Fab and thanks to board and Dr. Smizer for your patience. Said to President Fab that locked me up and the whole thing turned white. I appreciate your patience with technology. Um, I, I also appreciate the opportunity to talk with you again. I think we've had lots of conversations about the Futures Lab over the last month. Um, and, uh, and I continue to appreciate your questions. And I also appreciate the work the Futures Lab team, smaller, has done. I'll share a little bit with that with you tonight. But as I've talked about in our past conversations, um, it is a school that provides, um, equity in the system that we don't currently have. And so I have, I appreciate that about the vision that, uh, that Scott has at the Futures Lab, but that other members of the LST, John McKay, um, people like that have, Sarah Baloo, um, trying to get our integrated services and our EL students access, um, to a program like this. Um, could have a profound impact on, uh, their pathways, their status in the system, and the way we look at how we, uh, how we support all our learners. I think that's important. Um, as you saw last time we talked, um, you know, we have two hundred and sixty students represented in all schools who are registered. And that's true without having a place. That's true without having a commitment. And, uh, I think that says a lot about, um, students that are excited about a program like this. So with that, I'm going to go through a short presentation and then I know there'll be questions and probably some comments before, uh, before you take your vote. Lauren, can we move to the next slide? I wanted to, uh, to start when we talked last, um, I shared with you the idea of success in a changing world and above and beyond. And, uh, and I, I expressed it after our last board meeting. That was something that was shared with me was this idea that, uh, that these are the ends. These are the things we've been charged with. The other thing I shared with, with some board members was, um, I think it's a couple of years now ago when, uh, about the time we brought on our last, uh, charter school, the board challenged us as leaders of the district to come up with a model that was competitive and, and wondered at the time if we could have kept that, that particular charter school around, um, but also challenged us to think creatively about what could it look like in the district going forward? And so tonight I want to show you, I think, what some of that work is, has done and, and in short time, they really have created a lot of opportunity for, for students, but also a lot of opportunity for our district. And ultimately that will pay off for all our schools, not just, um, the students at the Futures Lab, and I think that's important. I start tonight just with design principles. This group, as they work through the year, created what they feel like, um, they're about. And, uh, I think when you see what they're about, they truly align with success in a changing world and above and beyond as the extension in the district, uh, as an extension in the district. And I think that, that's pretty important. I particularly like the two bottom ones, uh, connecting with people in different ways and learning that impacts the world. And ultimately, they begin to see work that they're doing that impacts the world around them outside of the particular classroom. I think that's critical. And I think continues to shift the student experience and ultimately becomes, they become a lab and how we can do that across all buildings. Um, we go to the next slide, Lauren. As we think about the, the work, twenty-first century skills, essential skills, um, the Futures Lab has created their own mechanism for assessing and having students self-reflect on these skills which are taken right off of the state's website. Uh, they are modified from the state's essential skills. They utilized, uh, a rubric with the students this spring. They'll do that going forward. Um, and again, that becomes a model for students to understand, um, and, and to watch the students that are, that are engaged this spring go through it and understand where are they in their idea of global mindedness and how, how well do they advocate for themselves? And the ability to both, uh, acknowledge where I am on, on those, that rubric as well as get feedback from my, a mentor around where I am in that is a powerful, powerful intersection of these skills and truly brings these skills to life and for me, just give it, I've been here, put on Saturday, meeting at eight, doesn't go to our vacation. And it was, was, this is why he's still great or right side of, for life. The next one. Um, Lauren. It's not like you've already seen, but I wanted to reiterate, um, that as we go to that slide, there we, and you see as you look through the six in the chain work for our, um, ends. Much that program has built its line with, that the ends in mind. They have created themselves from scratch with the end driving what they're doing. And those two slides that we just saw, I think, um, intersect that pretty well and give you a sense of, you know, ultimately as they've come along, they have had that, uh, those four ends driving their work. Go to the next one. One thing that was asked was to think about what work has happened in addition to, they've had some students in their, um, in their class this year. They've got students registered for next year. But that group has also created a tremendous amount of energy in the system. Um, you know, we have, we'll hear, um, about from schools that will say it interferes, it takes away. In reality is it gives a touch point, it's district-wide for businesses. And here's business partners that have stepped in and helped, um, or created partnerships going forward with the Futures Lab. So these are individuals that have, have said they support, have allowed for students to access, have done work alongside students, and will continue to do that going forward. From Woodward, which I've talked about, their commitment from day one, they, they were super invested. They continue to be excited about the movement we're making. Madwire was a fantastic partner this year and looks forward to continuing it. In the current year, they let, uh, they let our, our Futures Lab have space most, most of the year. We had, uh, our entrepreneurial students in, in, uh, Madwire almost every time they met. Man Tooth Marketing worked alongside our students, continues to work alongside the interns that, uh, that are working directly around marketing for, um, Futures Lab. I think that's important. Their marketing strategy includes students doing the marketing. They've got, they've hired marketing, um, managers, if you will, that are students. Um, and, and Man Tooth Marketing is working right alongside those individuals as well as working with their entrepreneur class. Old Town Media's been great. Outer Products, Blue Ocean has been fantastic. Um, Brian Construction, I, I think I shared with you last time we talked, um, since two weeks ago has come forward to say they want to help us. They want to do work second semester at the, at, uh, the Partnership Center. Top, Top Craft Trade School in Wellington has been part of the brainstorm from early on. Um, they, they continue to want to be a part of what we're doing. Brickman Construction's been fantastic. They want to be a part of what's going on. The Mu- Museum of Science and Discovery and I think Powerline Century is an interesting one. That's a company out in Wellington. Um, and they've got real-world problems they want to partner with and have, um, have our students brainstorm what solutions to their project are. Their pro- problems often involve power lines and animals, birds, um, other things that interfere with power lines and how do we solve that? That's an example of real-world, um, ideation that students are going to have a chance to do. And, uh, they've come forward and they, they look forward to working alongside this, uh, uh, Futures Lab, but also bringing on internships and possibly apprenticeships as part of their, uh, their work out of Wellington. And then in addition to the business work they've done in a short period of time, um, the stuff going on in higher ed, I think, is, has been fascinating for me to watch. Um, the Nancy Richardson Center has been great. I shared that with you last time we talked. I'm partnering to train teachers, um, for their, their, uh, CSU two hundred, two-ten class. And they want to do that in the fall for CSU credits. Um, their, the CSU Institute for Entrepreneurship wants to co-develop our high school business incubator so that it aligns with the Venture Validator. That's not just for Futures Lab. That's for any of our high schools that run a business incubator-type model. Um, but remember, we don't run a business incubator at all eight of our schools. Um, we may not run them at any necessarily, but we certainly don't run it at all eight. We don't have the staff at all our small schools. And this is CSU coming to the table and saying, we'll work with Futures to build this model that aligns so that any of our classes could get CSU credit, um, not requiring each individual school to do that, that legwork. The CSU Computer Science Department has been advising the team on coding and network and cybersecurity, how to build a pathway that, that aligns to what CSU, um, has in their program. The School of Ed is partnering with us and UNC. And I think that's pretty critical because if you talk to CSU and UNC, they haven't always worked super seamlessly around education, but they're both working as a triad to try to help build a education pathway in PSD for fall of twenty-one. Um, the College of Education is partnering with, develop a grow-your-own-teacher program here with early childhood, with bilingual education, as well as with STEM education in different focus areas. Um, UNC has come to the table. They, they are interested in building a sports and exercise science and partnering to develop that to open in, in Pooter School District in twenty-twenty-two. Not a, not a pathway we offer right now. Something they brought to the table. They're interested in, in developing with us. And again, when we do that with a district entity, we don't need the schools to do all the legwork to pull that off. When we have a sports and exercise science, is that something our high schools could offer? Sure it is. Um, it's also something we could offer that all of our students have access to. And that's where the equity piece really is critical, is that when you offer something like that, you allow all students access to it. Um, and that, that is huge for us. Ames is partnering to offer concurrent enrollment credit for coding. Um, that's different than we have currently in the model we're in right now. There isn't concurrent enrollment. Next year, um, our mobile app development will come with Ames, uh, Community College Credit. Um, and again, that's a piece that, uh, hold on a second. Can you still hear me? Sorry. That's a piece that, uh, is, is pretty critical. Um, we, we think about the ability for our kids to, to be honored with Community College Credit for the work they're doing. Um, Ames has come forward and asked us if they can help support that. Um, Front Range Community College is partnering to enhance our culinary, um, programs with specialized event planning. Of course, is part of our culinary hospitality pathway. Um, Front Range is partnering to bring natural resource management pathway to the Futures Lab in the fall of twenty-one. Now, keep in mind that an example there is that's a program that we stepped out of this year that we were paying the pathways model. And I'll reference that again when I get to the next slide that talks about cost. Um, that's a model, that's a resource, uh, natural resource model. We didn't have any control over, um, that we stepped away from. And now they've come back to the table and asked if they can do it in our environment for our students in a much more economical way for PSD. Um, Front Range Community College, uh, gen- general academic partnership as well. Um, they want to do some advanced placement. They want to do, um, classes that we don't necessarily have access to. Say a Calc III or a Diff EQ, those classes that we have a hard time offering at all our big high schools, let alone our small high schools. And we lose right now, and I'll show you that at the next slide, we lose lots of students right now early college model. And so having a pathway, a way to build a model where we as a district can compete is pretty important. Refer to, I've talked with the, board, have some questions from, what's really here? Here's happening.
Is he breaking up anybody else?
And you can see what's happened to our district. And, you know, you talk about, uh, a little bite at a time. It doesn't always feel that big. But when you really take a look at what's happened, and that's, God, you're breaking. Many years. All right, get my back. Can you hear me? My hair?
You are now. Okay. It's this wing.
Oh, is that's a,
You're good, Scott. Try, try again.
Am I good? Okay, so this is a pretty powerful pattern, um, that we see, uh, going down. Um, it's, it's moving in a downward direction for our district and it's important to move it back up. I think this is something we talked about as a board.
Kristoff, would it be better if he's only doing audio and not video? Does that help? Can you turn it off?
Maybe so. Scott, you want to try turning off your video and we're, we're almost losing you there.
All right, better?
Okay.
Okay, so, so I, I don't know what you heard, but this is a, this is a chart that I've referenced the last two times I've talked to the board. Um, and what this is showing us is, is choice out, um, in the impact district. And so if you go back to two thousand and eleven, we were positively impacted by choice. The tune of seven hundred and seven, or six hundred and seventeen students. And now we're five hundred and ninety-one in the negative. So that, that equates to a little over ten million dollars annually that are leaving our district. And that's pretty important, I think, for us to think about how do we turn that around. One of the things we hear, um, is we have a chance when our students, particularly around athletics, leave and go to one of our charters, they get to talk to our athletic director to find out the right placement. And we're asking, why are you leaving? And often it comes down to, um, flexibility. Our schools don't have the flexibility to meet the needs of our students. This program is not the end-all, be-all. It doesn't have all the answers, but it has some of the answers. And it gives us a pathway to build models that are directly competitive to where students are leaving, while allowing our students that, that, uh, stay in the district to stay attached to Fossil or Rocky and, and via Lobo or via Saber Cat and still feel like they have the experience to take some of those math classes, some of those early college classes they may be trying to take and leaving to go take. Um, we can build that into, um, the Futures Lab experience. And then, uh, if we go to the next slide, I think that's one you've asked for. You've asked for what's, what's the cost, um, as compared to the other. Um, and what I've tried to do here is, is represent the cost as it pertains to high school credit. Because that's a way to, to, to compare apples to apples. And if you take a look at the top one, that's Front Range Community College Career Pathways. And that's the program we approved or, or the board took action on just a month ago. Um, and that one comes in at a hundred and sixty-four dollars for high school credit. The students get twenty-five high school credits when they're there for half a day, half a year. So that, and then if you follow that all the way across, um, Front Range Community College is able to get reimbursed from the CTE funds and that brings it down to about a hundred and twenty-six dollars per credit. The Futures Lab, I told you last week, has about two hundred and sixty thou-, uh, two hundred and sixty students registered. So that'd be the top Futures Lab box. So that's where we are today with two hundred and sixty kids registered. Comes in at a hundred and fifty-six dollars, eight dollars cheaper than the Front Range without having a building, without having been able to run, without knowing what kind of support we have. Um, we already are cheaper than Front Range. Believe in, we can get to three hundred students this year with the, the marketing we've been doing, particularly when we think about our ELs. But also students we believe will come in. We also believe it will operate just like it did in the pre-launch year this year. That once you run through the first year, the first semester, students will access the second semester based on word of mouth, based on what's happening, based on what their schedule looks like for second semester. Again, as you walk across, you get a chance to see what does it look like with the CTE reimbursement? And you can also see, um, the second number there is if in fact we were to get to a model where we were able to get DCTS certification. If you remember, we, we've talked as a board that, that the majority or a good chunk of the work we'll do at Futures Lab will be CTE re- reimbursable. The DCTS is a pathway that many districts are looking at that where you create a separate school that's, that supports and operates in the model Futures Lab is looking to support all the other schools in your district. And when you do that, there's a couple stipulations. You have to have a director who is CTE reimbursable. We have one. They, they've positioned themselves to have one. You have to have a counselor that is CTE reimbursable. They have one. Um, and, and they, you have to have five unique pathways. Right now for the twenty-twenty school year, we won't likely have five pathways, um, because we've had to pause manufacturing. But for twenty-twenty-one, we believe we can have, um, a fifth pathway and get to that second number, which makes it even more competitive with all the other things we do. Um, and so you can get a sense of how economical could Futures Lab be? And we certainly believe we can, we could serve three hundred and fifty students with the staffing we have there this year. And we believe we could get to the DCTS model in a year or so. And we've got the pieces in place to do that. We're able to do the, the big build second semester this year. We might have the five programs. We might be able to, to, uh, to go try to apply for that this year, but we certainly believe we can do it for twenty-one, twenty-two. You compare that to our charter school, our, um, and, and you look at what, uh, what money goes out. It's a little over eight thousand dollars. You saw that number earlier today. Um, that comes out to a hundred and fourteen dollars a student without CTE reimbursement. Um, if they got some, it'd be for a limited amount of programming. You can see the cost in our two thousand-seat high schools where they get very little reimbursement. They have lots of, of programming. Um, they come in at seventy-four to eighty-seven. That is depending on seventy-four is a full load. Sixty students is assuming, which many of our juniors and seniors don't take full loads. That's seventy or sixty. Um, you look at Rocky where the, where some of them can take eighty, it's a little less than that. Um, that gives you an idea of what the two thousand-seat high school can be. There's economics of scale there. When you pull out to our two hundred-seat high school, they end up somewhere between ninety-seven and a hundred and thirteen. And you can see when you, when you drive Futures Lab to three hundred students, you certainly are competitive with, uh, with our smaller schools in town. We are certainly not providing anything that is exorbitant. And we definitely have created a model that's cheaper than what we paid with Career Pathways. What I don't reference in here at all is when Futures Lab starts or when, uh, Front Range Community College brings on a program like, uh, like Forestry and they do that in a high school select model, that is going to make the price of our overall credits even cheaper because that's doing it in a model that's actually beneficial for our district. Um, and we're not paying for the teacher. We're not paying as much for the teacher as we're paying for the teachers right now. So we have a chance building programs like that to be cheaper than I saw here. But inside the yellow square, I just wanted to show you how it's, how competitive it can be with the other programs we have in town. And when you, when you pull that alongside all the benefits that come with having a district program, it becomes an, uh, an avenue for our community, our, our colleges and our businesses to plug into PSD. Um, and those are priceless partnerships. Those are partnerships that are good for kids, good for long-term benefits. And they're not even represented in, in this model, but they allow for us to benefit not only the kids at Futures Lab, but the kids in our, in our district, um, as we build long-term partnerships that, that can ultimately bring in, um, resources from, from, uh, internships and apprenticeships to, uh, the dollars and cents. Um, the, the avenue for businesses and our higher ed to plug into PSD has been impressive to me to see how much of that we were able to do in one year with a small group of teachers and, and a counselor. So, um, and with that, I think that's my last, I'm looking at, just want to do some questions and comments.
Okay, great. Um, thanks Scott. And you, you, uh, made a presentation that was still different than what we've been talking with you behind the scenes. That's great. Thank you. Um, board members, questions or comments at this point?
Well, thank, excuse me. Thanks Scott for the presentation. I guess so, um, I'd just like you to talk a little more about the pathways. Um, I think I've expressed to you before my concern that there's not enough trades. And so could you talk about what you're going to be doing about maybe getting electricians, pipe fitters, transportation, HVAC, plumbers and welding?
Yeah, Carolyn, I appreciate that and I appreciate you. I think every time you say that, I tell you to keep pushing. Um, since we talked two weeks ago, um, we, we have had connection with a construction company that wants to take lead on, uh, either doing a tiny house or a teardrop camper. And has multiple of those trades that you've talked about that are willing to come to the table and what's going on at Futures. Um, and that's Brian Construction. And they are eager to help. They have been eager to help. And, and again, that group, um, along with the Trade School in Wellington have been, um, flying along the way the whole time we've been doing it, continuing to put on the pavement to say, we need support in trades. Um, and, and what I think Eric would say, the gentleman that Scott's in contact with from Brian is, he's got individuals, including welders, um, that, uh, welders, electricians that want to come, work alongside the students, help build capacity for the students and ultimately create internships for the students, which allows them to get out and get real experience. So I think we have a chance to start it small in the spring twenty-one. Um, but have every desire to have it be a big part of, of what's going on as we build our Futures Lab.
Kristen, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you.
So,
Sorry? Okay. Um, so Scott, the three, the three questions. Okay. Am I okay to go? All right. Um, so the three questions that I've been hearing about Scott are, um, the cost, which I think you just talked about, um, that we're bringing that cost down to below what we're paying for, um, pathways at the moment. Um, and I, I, I think maybe too, if you want to touch on the investment that this group has, has made into, um, our community, getting the people on board. I know you touched on, um, you know, the numbers of people, but just that investment that people have made to, to get, make that happen. Um, and then the second, the second thing was, um, that I've heard is the support that we can, we can still show support for programs that are happening at some of the high schools, uh, but we can do that at a district level. And the third thing is the equity piece. Um, and equity piece to me is a huge piece. And I, um, one of the things when we did a one of, or the two-by-two talking, um, you mentioned, um, the recruiting of, um, the ELL students and the students with disabilities. So I know that's three different things, but I wonder if you might be able to touch on those three things.
You know, I talked about, when we, when we met last, about direct marketing to our ELs. And what I'm gathering, that's going well. They've got lots of interest, lots of families who are calling in. Um, and John McKay and, and Brooks Ramsey continue to follow up on that. And, uh, are building some excitement around how do they get them, get them in the program? That's what you're going to have to do. And, um, I think that, that direct marketing, direct access, one-on-one is going to be how you do that. Um, but, but that's pretty important. And, and John's been banging the drum on that for, um, nine months. How do we make sure we do that and we're intentional about that? Um, in Integrated Services, it's a little different model. We, we have marketed out to all of our special ed teachers um, with the help and support of, of a couple of our, um, Romy Tobit has been great. Sarah Baloo's been great. And talking about how can we, um, get some of those students to engage with the program? Um, I, at this point, there's support built into the program. I think you saw last, when we talked last, it's, uh, there is a halftime person built in there that Scott's taken out of the budget he has. Um, putting emphasis on supporting students, the EL students that, that come. He's made that, that commitment and to build a relationship and to support students in the work they're going to be able to do um, in that type of model, which is, um, gives us a chance, a way to, to help those students. Um, and so that, that's question number one. Um, my belief has always been, um, it was as I was a building principal, but it certainly is now, that when we are able to, as a district, highlight the things we do, but have an avenue to plug into the district, we will ultimately support all of the programming going on. We don't have any desire for Futures Lab. I don't have any desire to have Futures Lab become the CTE program from the district. We got way too much great CTE program going on in the district. Um, and so we want to be able to highlight that and support it. And I, I think to a question Naomi asked two weeks ago. if we were able to build and incubate programming at Futures Lab that every high school was able to mimic because we had enough energy in the, in each building to do it, that'd be awesome. We'd be meeting the needs of those kids. We'd be building, we'd be incubating teachers that could go teach in those sites. And that would be fantastic. That'd be an awesome model to have in the interim, being able to do it one place where we could pull it off and we could show that we could do it is an add-on to what we're doing in the buildings. It's not replacing what we're doing in the buildings because what we're doing in the buildings is fantastic. I do think it's important to, to call out though, we do here, I've heard, I know you have, that we do these programs. And I think you saw when I talked with you last, the programs we're talking about, we're not doing in very many of our sites. There might be a program that one or two of our sites are doing, but not eight of them. And so there's a lot of students that don't have access. And that really, when we truly look at this with an equity lens, we can't say our students have access to cybersecurity right now at, at all of our sites. We can't say they have access to a big build program at every one of our sites. We've got one that does a fantastic job. And we've got other sites that have tried to get it off the ground. And then we've got small sites that have tried to figure out how to pull it off, but they just don't have enough students to make it manageable. And when you think about what I shared with you last time we were together, the, the number of students that are accessing Futures Lab from our choice schools is pretty palatable. And I think ultimately we'll see the same thing from our big schools as it's an add-on. It's like, it's like adding a wing on all eight of our schools and allowing that wing to provide programming that, that isn't available to all our kids. I think I answered all three of your questions, Kristen.
You, you did.
Thank you. This is Naomi. So thank you for pulling together that cost per credit that I asked you for. That is really helpful for me. I just want to kind of echo some of the things that I heard Carolyn saying. When I joined the board and we started talking about the Futures Lab, I had a picture in my mind that is different than what we're looking at today, but I think is the same as what we wanted. So I just want to make sure I'm looking at this correctly. The trades are super important to me that we are adding that as an option. I feel like as a country, one of the biggest mistakes we made was telling everyone that they needed to go to college to be successful because we all know that that is not true. And lots of people wasted a lot of money on that. So, so I think that that is, that is super, like that is the important piece so that students can get out of this program and get a certification and get a good, high-paying career job. And so I just want to make sure that, that the thing is the thing that we're talking about. And we're not going to veer off in another direction. I appreciate that students want to do coding. That's great. That is an important skill. But I also want to make sure that we're doing HVAC, electric, construction. Those things are, are, I think vital to the success of our students. Our top students are always going to be taken care of. Our bottom students are going to get taken care of. It's those kids in the middle that we really need to help. And so I think that what I'm hearing you say is those things are coming in the spring because you're working on the partnerships and helping to build those partnerships. So if we're continuing forward, I'm just going to say, I'm going to be here next year and I'm really going to hold your feet to this and say, where are those trades? Because, you know, personally, I think I mentioned this in, in some board meeting at some point. But my mom didn't graduate from high school and she became a union carpenter. And that literally saved my family. And I want that for the kids who don't want to go on to college, but still want to have good, high-paying jobs. So I hope that we can see that come to fruition, hopefully sooner. And you're right, we've all gotten contacted, I think, by multiple people. And this is a concern of mine because I don't want there to be animosity between our eight schools and the Futures Lab. I really want it to be a partnership. So how are you in district leadership helping to create that bridge and make, make everyone come on board with this partnership so that we can continue forward with the awesome culture that we have in PSD?
Those are good questions. And, and one, I would say we are, we are committed to the trades. We have been the whole time. I do think, you know, when, when I came to you two weeks ago, what I believed I was talking to the board about was the move we made to be economically intelligent. I think when, when I had talked to the board previously, we talked about how to get from, from Fort Collins High School, which we had one classroom, one period of the day. And you can't really show a proof of concept or the design of your CTE center or your Futures Lab, whatever you want to, however you want to market that. You can't really show the design of it acting like a business startup, an, an intermediate step between what school feels like and what Madwire feels like, for instance. And so we, at that point, said to the board, what we were looking at was a model. We weren't looking to build anything. We were looking to lease for two years, something small, and then move out to prospect, which I still contest is, is a smart move by us to, to let us build and show the opportunity that this program has to build energy with our schools, Naomi, but also with our community. Because I think we have a, a good, good culture in our district. One of the challenges we have in our district that we, we, we have a hard time locking our arms and saying we're all one because we've been taught to be competitive. And I was as competitive as the next guy. I still am, only I don't get to be competitive with others and want to beat other districts. Not, I don't have the same competitive fire to be the best school in town anymore, but our, our schools have that desire. And what we've heard from other places is when schools start to see their students going and finding benefit in the model, they will, they will buy in. And we've got that right now. We've got many schools that see it as a value add to them. And we've got others that are still thinking, well, it's, it's a competitive, it's taking kids away from us. But when we go back to the slide I showed where we're 1,200 kids below where we were, that's 120, 140 kids a year leaving our district to go somewhere else that's not us. And so I think it's important to do both. I want us to have a healthy dialogue and healthy relationship. And I also recognize that, that there's change involved. That when we, when we have change, and particularly when we continue to push on change, when resources are scarce, and we start to take a look and say, well, what could we get rid of? And right now, I believe this is a resource enhancer for our district. And I also believe it will help build relationships among the district also because this truly is an extension of every one of our schools. And some of our schools already see it as that and promoted it as that. And other schools, I believe, will come along and see it as an enhancer. And there are other opportunities for us with a model like this as we go forward. But, but we've got to let it, we've got to let it foster itself. We've got to let it come along because they did a tremendous amount of work in this pre-launch year, as we told the board. We said this is a pre-launch year. And when we think about the work that got done this year, it really is a lot. And we've got a tremendous amount of resources for the district going forward. And I don't believe we've scratched the surface because we really haven't asked anybody for money yet. We tend to be believers in if you build it, the resources will come. That's the way it's worked for me in my career. I believe this is no different. This, if we truly get behind this as a, a board and a district, this will bring resources in that will help support programs that are happening in our schools, not just the Futures Lab. And that will help, I think, with the relationships you're talking about, Naomi. But, but my goal as a leader is to have a high-flying district with healthy relationships. And I, I believe that includes the Futures Lab.
So first, I, I guess I want to start off with, you know, having the conversation with you earlier this week and, and hearing from some other people, the equity part of it is really big for me. And one of the things that I heard that really kind of changed my lens a little bit was really realizing that this is also an opportunity for those kids that maybe only see trades as their avenue, as an opportunity to see other opportunities. So they feel like all they have is construction to go into. This might be an opportunity to see that they have chances in other avenues, which I hadn't thought about. And I thought that was kind of a, a nice thing. So I, I did want to share that, that I heard. You talked about all students being able to, to access these classes. Do we feel confident that we've come up with good ways for the schedules to work in all of our schools? Again, Rocky with being, you know, it's block schedule and some of the others. Do we feel like we're able to be able to offer these classes and not take other time away from them well?
That's a, DJ, that's a great question. It's something that team wrestled with a lot this year because we've been out to districts where districts have come in and said every school will have the same schedule. And so, and we wrestle with that. I, I had conversations with our principals about that very thing. And, but I go back to what Naomi asked for, right? And I'm not a huge believer in the district says every school has to do X, Y, or Z. What, what the team did this year, Nick Peterson mostly, because he came from the council ranks, understood all the ins and outs of all the schedules, is he put together an actual schedule for every school to look at. And so indeed, they all work. They all work better than they did in the current year. And they all work better than what Front Range's schedule does. And so we have a model that we've been able to learn from with Front Range and with what we did in year one. And all of our schools have students registered for it. So they've all figured out how to do it. There's no question that there are schedules that work better. It aligns very well with the block schedule. It just does because they're there half the day. They're there either in the morning chunk or the afternoon chunk. So it aligns better with, with Rocky's schedule. That being said, if you think back to what we talked about last week, half a day, half a year, they can earn more credits at the Futures Lab than they can at Rocky. So for students looking to keep up or catch up in credit count, they actually have an advantage at Futures Lab over even Rocky. And Rocky has an advantage over all the other schools in town except Polaris. And Pooter's pretty close. But, but when you talk about, you know, the students at Fossil or Collins, they're at quite a bit of a disadvantage just given straight credit they have opportunities to have when you're in the school.
Right. And then I, I really, really appreciate you mentioning the other schools and CTE programs that are out there. And I, I think that is something that we need to figure out as a district, a better way to be able to talk more about that and how, you know, the, the kids that go to Rocky or how they could use the Futures Lab to supplement things, but also the fact that, you know, they have opportunities with their... My daughter went through the Teachers Academy and, and had a fantastic time there. And so, you know, I, I just want to make sure that this is the, the nice shiny object, brand-new object, and we're holding it up, that we don't forget about the great things that the other CTE programs and other great programs that are out there. Pooter's Build Program that they have for their little house and stuff. I just want to make sure that we, we are out there talking about that and, and knowing that there are so many wonderful opportunities in our district. And how you could go, you're able to combine some of these is, is a very nice selling point. And I want to make sure that we, we talk that up. And then lastly, could you please send out these slides?
Yes, the slides will all come to you.
That would be great. Thanks.
For sure they will. DJ, I, I love that. And, and I, I would tell you that's a huge part of it, right? Is we, we have been on a mission. Scott's job is not just Futures Lab. Scott's job is, he's the Director of Career Innovation. And that encompasses all of CTE across the district. His view is not, Futures Lab is CTE. His view is it's a part of what's going on in the district and we'll continue to do that. Tanya Alcaraz is a great advocate and she works under Scott. And what she does is advocate for the resources that she has. She has, she advocated this year for, as we continue to look at reimbursement, how do we push that money back out to our sites to help reinforce the work they're doing in CTE? So the goal is to grow those opportunities in our district. We can't grow those opportunities with just Futures Lab. We have to grow those opportunities as eight sites plus the Futures Lab and soon to be 10 sites, sites, but the Future plus the Futures Lab. That's how we'll grow those opportunities. And I think it's important to recognize we have fantastic programs. You just mentioned the Teacher Cadet Program at Rocky. Kelsey does a phenomenal job. And if you go to the other three high schools, you have the same opportunity to take that class as they do under Kelsey. The other seven schools, and the answer is right now, no. But will you? And can we enhance what Kelsey does by having that for college credit and be a part of getting kids ready? And I think the answer is yes. So we can continue to do that awesome work at Rocky. And for the kids that don't have access at Rocky, they may have access in one other point. So we're not having to replicate it eight times. And that's the power, I think. It's not to replace, but it is, I think, from an equity standpoint, how do all students have access to the Teacher Cadet Program? Because I guarantee there are people that want to be teachers at all our other schools.
Okay, thanks. It's Carolyn. Hey, I would just, I, something you were saying, DJ, reminded me of something that a principal said about the, the trades increase access for our students. And I think that our kids who get to go in the trades have access to not only a better standard of living, but they also have access to further education. And when I look at my own son, I think of that. He worked in the trades for three years while he went to school so he could pursue a more professional career and came out the other side with no debt. I mean, it was, it was great for him to be able to work and, and support himself and his family while he, he went on to pursue his career in, in, with the Fort Collins Police Department. So I think that we have to encourage our kids who want to go into the trades to do that, but not only to pursue careers in the trades, but to see that as a springboard into, into better things for them, whether it's a better standard of living or, or a springboard into further education. So I think that, that if we have a kid who asks, hey, what do I have to do to be an electrician? We should be able to give him an answer about what he needs to do and not have to tell him, gee, I've never heard that before. I can't help you. So I hope that, that, that's going to change that mindset in our, in our district that we'll be able to tell kids, hey, here's what you can do.
Carolyn and Naomi, I hear from both of you.
Here's how you do it.
The model of, we, we've got to step back a little bit from where we landed. And that's not just the PSD thing. We did it across the country where we moved hard and fast to a four-year education for all, at least the perception of that. And we've got to make sure we give students access to see themselves in a future. And that could include continued education. It could also include the skills when they walk out of PSD to get a high-paying job and to hook up with internships and maybe apprenticeships before they leave. And one of the things I, I haven't said tonight is Scott's been pushing on other cabinet members for us to build apprenticeships and things like HVAC and electricians inside our own district. He sees us as our own model for how do we start to do that work inside of PSD? Not, not just relying on the outside entities, but how do we, how do we do that kind of work in, inside of PSD as well? From working on our, our laptops to working on our HVAC systems, it would be awesome to have students attached to that when they're still PSD students and creates opportunities for them both in the district and out of the district. And so that's something that, from a CTE perspective, is on the table as we speak.
Thank you. This is...
Thank you. This is Naomi. So one of the things that I really struggled with, um, as I've been mulling this over, um, is, is the cost of it and the amount of money that today we're, we're putting into this in order to get something out of it, um, later. And it was actually our esteemed president, Mr. Fev, um, who helped me really understand the value that can come with keeping a school open by reminding me that my own children attend a school that was almost closed a few years ago because of budget cuts, Baby Elementary. Shout out Dave Patterson, Denise Brunda, exceptional leadership. And the incredible experience that they were able to have in our neighborhood school because the board at that time, when I don't even know if my children were alive, um, made the decision to keep that school open. So I guess today I'm willing to say, let's keep, keep on keeping on with this understanding that we, we are focused and, and thirsty for, clamoring for, to use a phrase we all know and love, um, trade education and opportunities for our students. And, um, and I really look forward to having a discussion with you a year from now where you tell me all of those excellent programs that you are getting ready to open. Thank you.
Thanks Naomi.
Yeah, so, um, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm live now. Okay, fine. So I, I, uh, could, uh, do a big, long speech, but it seems like we're going to support this thing. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time. I'll just say that I'm definitely supportive of this because I think it, I think it helps with the engagement for students, getting their interests, uh, engaged in, in learning that's relevant to them. Uh, I think it provides equitable opportunities that don't currently exist and may not exist, even if, even if, uh, yeah, that may not exist, uh, because there aren't enough kids in each school who are interested in them. Because, uh, because businesses or other, uh, community partnerships would not exist on a school-by-school basis. Some of them have said they want to do it once for the district rather than with every individual school. So I think there are opportunities. And I think sort of related to that, at least in the business sense, there are, there's the potential for, uh, additional resources for the district. That is not only from businesses and community partners who are willing to share dollars, machinery, equipment, and potentially bodies, uh, with the district. Uh, but also from the point of view of, uh, being in a better competitive position relative to both, uh, uh, neighboring districts, some of whom have, or I guess most of whom are going to either do or are going to have a program like this. Uh, and potentially also our, our charter schools. And I am absolutely supportive of the idea of having trade, uh, be a part of the, uh, of the equation. Uh, I think that there are some things, and we've alluded to this as an example, network, uh, cyber security kind of things that, uh, we're going to be challenged to get, uh, teachers for. And if we can get a, a really good teacher for that who's willing to take a cut in salary from what they could be making in the industry, frankly, uh, to teach our students, uh, and make that available equitably to all students in the district as opposed to just at one school where we might be able to pull that off. I think that's a great thing also. So I think there are opportunities that are going to come from that, uh, from that efficiency as well. And, and so trades and I guess what I would say, not only trades. And, and I think the reason people have been talking about trades is because they see the not trades already, or some of the not trades already. And, and we need both. Um, so I'm, I'm, uh, I'm all on board. I, I think we should call the question because we got other things to do.
Okay, and I think that's really appropriate. I'm, I'm just going to say, I can't quite be like Nate, you can say ditto, but it's very close to Rob. I, I would, I'd like that you at least touched on where this all came from historically because, um, it is true that, uh, a few years back, the, the board was really concerned with what was going on with charter schools. And, you know, I, we all learned not to say innovation because that was offensive, but you know, how do we build things into the system? But everybody said it, you know, this, this seems to be altering the trajectory. You're giving equity, you're, you're finding ways to be cost efficient. Um, and to me, you're, you're hitting so above and beyond, uh, towards our vision of what we had imagined we could be doing, that you're, you know, you're hitting every element of, of our ends with this. So, um, I support it. I, I thank again DJ and Naomi for the, the making us reflect. I, I think it's super important. It, it has led to some tweaks in how you're presenting and what you're presenting to us for a few demands. I, I think it's doing exactly what we want. And it seems like it may be leading to an easier vote at this point. So I think a week ago, Rob and Sandra and I could not be sure how this.
DJ Anderson?
I, I will vote, but I want to make it sure that I, I also will continue to watch closely that this continues to head in a good process and area that I hope to see that this goes in. DJ Anderson votes.
Hey, could I interrupt for a second? I don't, I don't remember there being a motion. Did somebody make a motion that we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was just, I just missed it.
Yes, I believe.
Yes, Kristen Draper moved and Rob Pedersen seconded.
Rob seconded. Can you, can you, uh, can you tell us that Jill, please?
DJ Anderson votes aye.
Kristen Draper? Kristoff Sev? Naomi Johnson?
Naomi Johnson votes aye.
Rob Pedersen? Carolyn Reed? Motion passes six, zero.
Okay.
Thank you all.
And Sandra, I can't say thank you enough, um, and, and everybody behind it for the work you have put in to make this pass six, zero. But it was, uh, it was hard sledding, so congratulations. Okay. So that brings us to item six point four. And I believe.
Naomi moves that we approve and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Pooter School District Board of Education believes that every student should have the opportunity to reach his or her full potential and to participate meaningfully in the civic and economic life of the community. And whereas PSD strives to educate every child every day and provide every student the chance to succeed regardless of their learning needs. And whereas quality public education develops a competitive workforce that will drive a vibrant Colorado economy for decades to come. And whereas Colorado's investment in education is less than many other states and consistently ranks near the bottom of, uh, in funding. And whereas education funding has not recovered from the recession. In the 2019, 2020 school year alone, Colorado's school budgets were underfunded by $572 million. And the loss to the Pooter School District for the 2019, 2020 termed the budget stabilization factor or the negative factor is approximately 19.3 million with a cumulative loss from 2009, 2010 to 2019, 2020 of approximately $263 million. Whereas reduced funding is directly impacting the district's ability to provide meaningful educational opportunities for all students, creates high teacher and staff turnover and erodes the PSD community's local investment in education. And whereas the reduced funding also limits the board's ability to effectively respond to PSD parents and community input on the district's programs and services. And whereas Colorado is currently experiencing and will be recovering from the economic toll and human impacts from the novel coronavirus 2019 COVID-19 global pandemic. And whereas education funding is projected to diminish even further in the 2020, 2021 school year. And whereas reduced funding is directly impacting the district's ability to provide meaningful educational opportunities for all students. And whereas reduced funding also limits the board's ability to respond to parent and community input on the district's programs and services. And whereas recent studies demonstrate that well-targeted dollars have a direct positive effect on student outcomes and that improving education in Colorado would generate billions for the economy. And whereas Fair Tax Colorado will provide desperately needed funding to support schools as they weather the economic toll of the global pandemic by assisting schools in providing students educational opportunities to prepare them for success in college, career, and life, preparing a qualified workforce for decades to come and ensuring that Colorado's economic prosperity is shared with every community in the state. And whereas Fair Tax Colorado will create a tiered tax structure where 100% of the Coloradoans receive a tax cut on their first $250,000 in taxable income as it lowers the current 4.63% tax to 4.58%. 50% of revenue raised is dedicated to pre-primary through 12th grade education. Taxpayers across all income levels will pay a more equal portion of their income in state and local taxes. And whereas Fair Tax Colorado gives local school boards greater ability to respond to parent and community input and provide programs and services to meet the needs of all their students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pooter School District Board of Education officially declares its support for Fair Tax Colorado for the purpose of increasing funding of public education in the state of Colorado.
Way to go. Second?
Well, thank you. Do I have a second for the?
I just, uh, wanted to point out, this is something that the legislative committee had, uh, was bringing to the, the full board for considerization. And we were, uh, it kind of goes along with the letter that we sent. Well, it does go along with the letter that we sent where we were asking for, uh, state legislators to, uh, refer this to the ballot, realizing that we should probably go ahead and just come out and say that, uh, we support this in general also.
I just wanted to point out that anybody who's interested in this, I, I've spoken to a lot of people who haven't heard of this before. So if you're interested in learning more, um, fairtaxcolorado.org, um, has, um, a lot of information on that. That's fair tax color.
Any other comments? Okay, and I just want the board to know, uh, that I have reflected on this and have decided I will not vote for it. I'm fairly confident it'll pass without my vote, so I feel comfortable with that. I will definitely sign my name on the resolution, uh, if, if that's how the vote comes out. And the reasoning for me is just simply, I, I just don't feel good that I've had the time to, really that this, uh, initiative has had its time and reflection in the system to, uh, to yet be, uh, put before us as a resolution. I, I think it requires more, uh, discussion. So, you know, I'm not going to go into detail, but I just want to make sure you understand I will vote against it.
DJ Anderson?
DJ Anderson votes aye.
Kristoff Sev? Naomi Johnson?
Naomi Johnson votes aye.
Rob Pedersen?
So in the spirit of, uh, something that, uh, Kristoff said earlier, there's probably some wordsmithing I might do on this thing, but I absolutely supported this period, and so I vote aye.
Carolyn Reed? Motion passes five, one.
Okay, very good. Um, so finally, on the action items, we have item six point five, which was brought from the consent agenda.
Okay. I, I move to approve an award of bid for the athletic turf replacement project, including add alternate number one at Fort Collins High School to ECI Site Construction Management, Inc. And the athletic turf replacement project at the Pooter High School to American Silver.
Hey guys, I love sports. I, I'm the sportingest, sportest there ever was, and I just love them so much. And I completely recognize the value of sports to students. And I want to make sure that students have the opportunity to play sports. And I just saw on the Colorado Inn a couple of days ago how they're starting to open up the idea of what training will look like over the summer. And Chassa is working really hard to also decide what that is going to look like for both fall and spring sports coming up. Right now, we don't know what that is going to look like. We don't know if, um, we're going to have to have limited members of a team on a bus. Uh, the last number I heard was 11 people per bus, um, which would cost a lot of money if we had to bus students to other, um, other districts in order to play games. We don't know if they're going to need different equipment or different sanitization for the equipment that they have. Um, we don't know what about temperature checks and, and things like that. It's, the list is long. And, um, I appreciate that the $3 million for these turfs is coming out of a bond. Um, that we don't have $3 million sitting around like usual. I think that given that sod, um, can be laid in the early fall, it would be prudent for us to wait to get a little bit more information about budgeting and sports teams and see where we're going. Because if it doesn't look like things are going to pan out the way that we think and we can put it off, maybe that money gets us a little bit of interest in the meantime. Maybe we find out that in order to best support our student athletes, we need to spend money. Where is that money going to come from? And I recognize that it wouldn't come from this directly because this has to do with construction.
construction. But, you know, I think that these are concerns that I have, and I just wanted to throw it out there. I think it would be worth waiting until the fall to sod our fields.
Yes, thank you. I'd be happy to. And I want to kind of repeat what President Fire said earlier about Member Johnson's thought process, and we appreciate that. We do appreciate your hard questions and your challenges to us, because it does make us think as well about what we're doing, especially in these times. And we do want to be responsible both fiscally and to our students. And so just to say, I do appreciate your questions. Would like to just give you a little history on these fields just real quick, just to let you know why they're selected at this time for this replacement. These are part of the Summer 2020 projects, and those projects usually start around August, September. So these projects have been in the works for a while now with design process, primarily selection process and then design, and then back to the selection process through the RFP. The field at Fort Collins High School, for example, is over 17 years old, and the track, I'm sorry, the track is over 17 years old. We're starting to see some degradation below the field or below the track surface of the asphalt surface that's below there, causing some varying, various surface levels around the track. You're probably all really aware that Fort Collins High School has an outstanding track team. They run really fast, so they have worn this track out basically. This track is ready to be replaced. And, you know, I don't want to go into that that's unsafe or anything like that, but it's just time to replace. It has reached its lifecycle. Normally, a track of this nature at a high school would be 12 to 14 years. This one being over 17 years has gone well beyond its lifecycle, primarily due to some good maintenance and taking care of it. But that's time. The fields in question at Fort Collins High School and at Pooter, the grass that's going to be replaced with the fields brings some equity to our school district that we don't have right now. Those fields are going to be turf fields, they're going to be multi-use fields, so they're going to be lined for boys and girls lacrosse, boys and girls soccer, I believe another sport, I can't remember. You know, we're adding sports and we're adding teams constantly. Right now, to your point about transportation costs and how are we going to do that, these fields will actually help that problem because now we'll be able to hold varsity sports and JV sports on these sites at these schools, where right now we transport across town. We go to Fossil or we go to French Field, because they're the ones that have these fields right now, and they're very crowded and scheduling is tough. We did talk with the Athletics Department when your question came up earlier in the week about, I had met with Russ McKinstry, the Athletic Director, on Friday, just an incidental meeting, and started asking him, you know, what does fall look like? Because I had some of the same concerns, you know, how are we putting a 55-person football team on a bus and taking them on a trip when we can only have 11 as of right now? So we had that discussion, and he felt strongly that fall sports will happen. We don't know what they look like. We do think that practices will go off in a way that does allow social separation. These fields will be a big part of allowing that because of the various sports that we'll be able to play on. He was sure that spring sports would be a very strong possibility that spring sports will happen, and therefore that track and those fields would be very important again. So we do feel pretty confident that sports are going to happen in some form, although we don't know what that is. But even if we're at 100% at-home learning, remote learning, doesn't mean we still can't have sports. There still could be sports going on, and that's what I think Chassa and everybody's working through, is what does that look like? So we don't know all the answers, and so I agree with that. I do think the timing is important on this because these are projects that need to happen over summer. We would not be really able to lay sod in the fall if we waited till the fall because the schools in session. Also, the contractors now have bid on this project based on dates, starting in dates that we set, specifically so fields could be ready by the time fall sports began. So that would be rescheduling those, and we would probably have to put these off for another year or two. Talking about where the money's coming from, and I think if you think about the bond budget as buckets, we have several buckets in that bond. We have our bucket of our big projects from ZAC to the transportation facility to the schools that are being built, that's that one big bucket, and there's millions, hundreds of millions of dollars in that bucket. And then we have the $40 million bucket, which was all these items that were identified back in 2013 and 2014 as projects that we wanted to bring forward to get done that have either been put off because of lack of funding or because we knew the lifecycle was going to run up into this bond cycle now that we're in. So there's that bucket, and that's where these funds are coming from. These funds are coming from that 2016 $40 million bond bucket. That money is available, the programs or the projects are in the system. These in particular are obviously ready for contract assignment. If you'll look back and remember the list that we gave you, the Excel spreadsheet that had the pivot tables in it that we gave you, that you could kind of look at those different pivot tables and look at the information how you wanted, you'll see that we did pause on about $3.5 million worth of projects. Now, some of that is because we just don't have enough bandwidth in the system to tackle those projects. Some of that is because we realized we could put those off for a while. So I think we are looking at that to that point. We're looking at what can be put off, what can we delay on to maybe, you know, bring that money into the system at some later date for possibly some other use. I thought Brett Parsons did a good job tonight of explaining where these funds are, that they're remaining funds of the bond is what we would use to offset some capital expenditures in the system. So these funds for these projects, I would not classify those as remaining funds. These funds are already dedicated, they're in the system. Those remaining funds would what would be left over once we do a good job on our side of the House to make sure that we're coming in under budget on bids, that we're changing scopes to save money, that we're saving money on these projects, that we don't go into the contingency funds for the major construction projects and that we get that money back, then that would be the remaining funds at the end of the bond that we could look at using for those capital projects to offset those. So if you'll think of it that way, hopefully that helps kind of where this money's coming from. I would continue to recommend that we go ahead and do these projects and that you pass this tonight. We have contractors ready to go. We have students that are going to need these fields. We do believe the savings from transportation, the irrigation that we're no longer going to have because of the turf and less maintenance on grounds, that there is a return on investment to these projects. And then plus just the need that we have to make sure our tracks are safe. Yes?
Thanks. I just wanted to follow up. So a couple of things. One, in the email response I got, it says, "With schools most likely not returning to normal schedules in the fall, contractors will have additional time to complete each project phase, and it would give new sod-installed additional time to grow and heal in." So given that response, I'm not sure why we couldn't wait until we have a clearer picture. And I guess some of the concerns that I have are things like, you know, just this week or last week, there was something that said that people are concerned that air conditioning ducts might carry this virus. So would we have to purchase UV lights to install in our air vents in order to, you know, reduce the spread of the virus? Or what about how to retrofit some classrooms in order to ensure that we can have as much in-person school as possible? And I recognize that what I'm saying sounds like a one-year fix. I don't want to sacrifice a year of our students' education so that we can have beautiful sod in the fall that no one gets on.
So I think the sod that that is referring to is the sod that's actually going to get replaced. So that's the actual grass sod. And when we go in and we cut out the turf that's down there now, the grass that's in there now, and we lay the turf over that, the synthetic turf, we're going to have some sod replacement around the edges. And that's all that's referring to. It's not referring to the actual whole field. The whole field itself is a synthetic turf. So it's not that sod. The other, yeah, the other part of your question was about the timing of it?
Um, yes, I'm sorry. So it sounds, it sounds like based on the email that I, the response that I got is that this is something that will be happening into the fall because contractors will have additional time to complete each project. So if this is going to be going into the fall, again, would it be prudent to gather more information recognizing that we would have to rewrite these contracts?
So that's at the end of the, that's at the end of the project. So the sod that's going to be replaced once all that cutout is done and the turf is down, that's that little bit of sod around the edges that has to have time to cure. And I think all that statement is saying is that we would have extra time because we don't know what the, what the fall sports are going to look like. It's not the field itself, though, that we're looking to have extra time on. If we delayed the start of these projects now, we would probably have to delay them at least a year. We would not have, we couldn't start them in the fall just because students are going to need them if the schools are open, you know. Even if we're, again, if we're 100% remote learning, doesn't mean we may not have sports and have those fields, have the need for those fields and those facilities. So I, yeah, that's just referring to the little bit of sod work that'll be patched in. And really, it'll be ready to be on. It's like when you see a turf lawn go in and you see the sod lay down. You can walk on it the next day, but they recommend you give it time to heal. And that's what that's referring to, is that this would give it that sod time to heal around the edges and probably prevent us from having to go back there and replace sod that gets chewed up during a football game or something like that. It was, it was more of just a point of saying that, you know, a little extra time doesn't hurt with the healing process for that, for that project. As far as the process that you're asking about putting the UV lights in the air conditioning, we're currently right now stocking up on PPE materials. We're also looking at a project where we're putting the, looking at the plexiglass barriers for our office personnel to protect them when people come into the office. You know, we're looking at that project, what that's going to cost and what we can use there. We've talked about as a cabinet, that CRF money and the ESER money, that's a perfect fit for those types of projects because it fits the COVID need. So we would probably, more than likely, use that money towards projects like that. We're looking at the filtration system in our HVAC systems. Do we need to go to, or can we go to a smaller micron filter and what the cost of that is? We expect to have that any day now. And again, we would look to run that through the CRF and ESER funds.
Okay, well, Matt, I think you actually answered my question. It was about the, was this synthetic turf or was it sod? Because it was an answer of both in the email. So that answers the reduction in watering and mowing. Do we know about how much we would save in that reduction, watering, mowing?
I don't have those answers, but I can sure work to get those for you. We do feel that there'd be, there'd be enough savings there that you would see a return on investment over a certain number of years just because of the maintenance, reduction in maintenance.
And how long does the turf typically last?
These fields are normally a 10-year field. We've had some that have gone longer. The one that we replaced last year at Fossil, I believe, was, was over 10 years old. So, you know, you look every 10 years to replace the, to replace the turf that's on
Mine was a comment. I was going to comment that some of those things that Naomi was mentioning would be perfect for that 14 million for the CARES Act. But, yeah, that's all I was going to say.
And I'm sure that we're going to have lots of those projects related to COVID. And so we'll be, you know, obviously, we would do an update with you to let you know where those projects are, what we're doing. Like I said, we're working on the sneeze shields, so to speak, and filter systems. I haven't heard the UV light one, that's a new one, so I made a note of that. I haven't heard that one. So, but we have, we have already purchased quite a bit of stock for PPE. We've got thermometers and masks and gloves, you know, we don't have enough to get us through probably for the whole year, but we're looking on how we stock that up and how those are distributed and used once school does start.
I really appreciate the work that has gone into this, and I, and I recognize that all of these decisions that we are making are really good. I don't feel good about approving a $3 million expenditure today on, on these fields. And I recognize that I'm probably in the minority here, and I am, I'm just happy to let my voice be heard and we can call the question. Thank you.
And thank you for letting your voice be heard.
DJ Anderson?
DJ Anderson votes aye.
Kristoff Sev?
Very good. Jill, would you please do a roll call vote?
Naomi Johnson?
Naomi Johnson votes no.
Carolyn Reed?
Carolyn Reed, and I know I didn't say anything during the debate, but I too am afraid that we continue to spend money without much thought of what the future holds, so I'll be voting no.
Motion passes 4-2.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Okay. So board members, that brings us through the action items and into the executive sessions for the evening.
No, 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 no. We need to do the motion to get out.
Do you want to break at this point, or do you want to?
No, we want to do the motion to get out of.
I see lots of vigorous nodding. So let's, what do we need, five or 10 minutes? What's everybody need? Give me a five or a 10. Five minutes. All right, five minutes and we're back, so let's try to be here at 8:10. Oh, motion for the executive session. Okay, um, got Naomi back. Okay. Thanks, Rob. Okay, so let's follow through in that case so we can release people that don't want to attend as well.
I move that the board enter executive session for the purpose of developing the strategy of the school district for negotiations related to the 2020-2021 Collective Bargaining Agreement or Employment Contracts as authorized by Colorado Revised Statute 24-6-402, subsection 4E3. Those invited to join the board and superintendent in executive session are Assistant Superintendent Todd Lambert and Scott Nielsen, Executive Directors Vicky Thompson and Dave Montoya, Legal and Policy Counsel Autumn Aspen, Budget Manager Brett Parsons, and Board Assistant DJ Anderson?
DJ Anderson votes aye.
Kristen Draper? Kristoff Sev? Carolyn Reed?
Rob Pedersen votes aye.
Carolyn Reed? Motion passes 6-0.
Kristoff Sev votes aye. Kristoff Fev votes aye.